Okay. Councillors, the time is now six thirty and I will declare the meeting open. I advise the public that this meeting is being webcast and members in the gallery may have their voice and image captured. By attending, you consent to being captured, recorded and webcast. Any statements made by individual persons during the course of this meeting are the statements of those individuals and not of council. You should refrain from making any defamatory remarks or making comments about another individual without their consent. Council accepts no liability for any statements made by individuals during the course of the meeting. In the event of an emergency or the fire alarm sounding, please remain calm and wait for instructions from the general manager and council officers. If we need to evacuate, the building's uh council's emergency muster point during council meetings, uh and briefings is the lower car park. Uh in the event of a medical emergency, please alert council staff for assistance. Uh council acknowledges the Warrnambool people as the traditional custodians of this land we are meeting on today, and pay our respects to elders past, present and future. I extend that respect to Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander peoples here today. We also acknowledge the Awhabikul people to the east and the Darkinjang people to the south, and other Aboriginal peoples who now live within the Cessnock local government area. Uh tonight, to lead us in the council prayer, I will invite Reverend Nicole Baldwin uh from the Anglican Church. Uh so please come forward, Reverend Baldwin. Councillors, please stand.
Let us pray. Most gracious God, we pray for the council of the city of Cessnock, its members and officers. Direct their work and influence their decisions to the advancement of your glory and the safety and welfare of this city, so that peace and happiness, truth and justice and sound development may be established among us. Fill us with your Holy Spirit so that we may listen to one another, speak the truth in love, and bear much fruit in the service of your kingdom through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Baldwin. Uh apologies, we have received an apology tonight from councillor Watten. Uh councillor Watten has also requested a leave of absence uh from the eighth of November, uh to the thirtieth of November. Uh moving that way, councillor Sander seconded uh councillor Hawkins. No debate, we'll put the motion, all those in favour, it's unanimous. Uh confirmation of previous minutes, moving that way, councillor Hill seconded councillor Sander. No debate, put motion, all those in favour. Uh councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Jurd and Savell. Those against councillor Olson declared carried. Uh disclosures of interest. No disclosures of interest, uh no petitions uh I'm aware of. Public address, um. Tonight, uh speaking uh in favour uh for report P E sixty twenty twenty two, uh we have Megan Lowe from S L R Consulting. Megan, he please come forward. Thank you. Megan, you'll have uh three minutes.
No worries. Uh good evening, councillors. Uh Megan Lowe, town planner from S L R Consulting. Uh thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the proposed construction of a service station, convenience store, car wash facility, fast food premise to operate twenty four hours a day, seven days a week at one five seven to one five nine one by Road Cessnock, which was recommended for approval by council staff. Uh on the Run or O T R is a family owned independent fuel and convenience retailer employing over three thousand people. More than one hundred and seventy sites are currently operational in South Australia, Victoria and Western Australia. New South Wales is an essential part of O T R's national profile with a pipeline of over thirty sites in construction or planning in New South Wales and more being identified all the time. There is an emphasis on identifying and developing opportunities in regional areas and investment and employment opportunities that O T R can bring, as well as the enhanced competition and customer offers will be valuable for regional communities. The O T R presence in South Australian fuel market as a strong independent competitor has contributed to South Australia consistently having the lowest consumer fuel prices in Australia. As O T R moves into new areas, it will increase competitive pressure on existing players and act as a downward force on retail fuel prices. O T R's retail offering is an integral point of difference from its competitors. The retail offer is customer focused and is differentiated by a wide product range, an emphasis on goods which are of high quality, good value and locally sourced, and a vibrant modern customer experience which is consistent across all the O T R stores. The O T R promise to customers is summarised by their motto motto, we never close. Daily needs such as bread and milk and the need for occasional emergency supplies such as nappies or headache tablets are available twenty four hours, seven days a week. The convenience is valo valued by many shift workers and others who may not be able to be able to shop um during the day or traditional trading hours. Uh it's especially valued where the daily needs and necessities of late night uh workers aren't available. Um in the case of Cessnock, where access to a supermarket is not available after ten P M at night, this convenience will be most beneficial to local shift and mining worker workers requiring these essentials at any time of day. In the absence of any significant adverse environmental impacts or planning issues as outlined in our application and concurred by council staff who have assessed the application, the proposal is considered to be in the public interest and worthy of council support.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Ms. Law?
Councillor Olson. Thank you. Uh I'm just looking at the site plan there.
Mm-hmm.
The conditions of consent say left in, left out for access.
Yep.
That's correct. What? Do you own the whole site?
Sorry.
Do you all own all that land there?
Uh the five lots, it'll be consolidated into one. That's correct.
Is there any other plans for that lot yet?
Uh not in this application.
Not at this time. Right. Okay.
No further questions. Let's thank Ms. Lowe for her presentation. Uh councillors will now move to uh deal with report P E sixty twenty twenty two. Uh councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I would like to move the recommendation uh as written that um noting that the uh current amen uh current recommendation also now includes some clarity uh to to clear up the any confusion regards to all uh all aspects of the site we'll be able to operate twenty four hours a day, including the convenience store.
Yep. Okay, uh is that motion seconded? Councillor Grine. Uh any debate? Councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. After reading this report and speaking with the public, I'm not against the Hungry Jacks and this D A coming to Cessnock, but I'm a little concerned about the location with it being near the school. I've had a fair few residents that have addressed it. Um so because of this and knowing West Hesnok, I've lived there for eleven years and that road, I'm very concerned about ambulances, fire trucks, all that being able to get through if we're gonna keep adding congestion to Wall and By Road without any alternatives. So I just can't support it on those bases. Thank you.
No further, uh councillor Bate.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Uh just uh following on from the the site visit today, I think it's important for council to note too that um that intersection is a very busy intersection and I think that uh in the into the near future, we certainly need to be looking at what we're doing uh with that T intersection that goes on to uh Mount View Road. Um it it will be uh or should be signalised uh to make sure into into the future. Um I guess it it, you know, it I share similar concerns with um some of the traffic congestion, Wall and By Road's getting um a lot busier. Though this application is up for approval, it's been approved by uh staff, so it meets the criteria and it's also been signed off by Traffic uh Transport New South Wales. So tonight, if we were to um go against this, uh the applicant would have their right to take us to the Land Environment Court and they certainly would win because it is uh got a green light on it. So I certainly will be supporting it because I believe that we shouldn't be wasting uh ratepayers money on the legal fees uh when we would certainly lose. Thank you.
Uh no further debate. We'll put the uh resolution. All those in favour. Uh councillor Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Olson and Savell. Those against, uh councillor Jurd. I'll declare the motion carried. Uh next up, uh we have speaking uh uh for the recommendation on report P E sixty one twenty twenty two, uh Yanos Camino uh from S L R Consulting. Uh please come forward. Thank you. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, councillors. Uh thank you for your time again. Look, gonna make this one uh short and sweet. Uh council's planners have recommended approval and we endorse that uh recommendation. I'm really here this evening to field any questions. Since the, I think it was the August meeting, we've provided the council team uh supplementary planning and transport uh assessment, which uh was in the business paper, I understand, included as well. So any questions uh feeling fi- uh sorry, any questions, you know, feel free to throw.
Okay, questions, councillor Olson?
Yes, thank you. Um from the last time we had this here to this time, there's nothing been changed on this plane. I'm just trying to work out how you're going to control the traffic if it banks up outside of the premises.
Um yeah, so in the supplementary uh traffic information was provided. The this uh planning application has gone through a thorough assessment, so we've actually gone past the criteria required. So that's in terms of vehicle traffic movements, uh parking and also drive-through queuing capacity. So we think we've, you know, alleviated the concerns in those regards.
You 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 think you've got it right, but what happens what happens if it it is a busy time and the cars bank up outside your property? What are you gonna do then?
Look, I I appreciate your your comment, councillor, in relation to the queuing. Um look, I guess there's the luxury too that there are two McDonald's, there would be two McDonald's in close, you know, close vicinity. So there for for some reason there is, I guess, looking like there's queuing capacity, there's another store close by for offering.
Yeah, I I I still have concerns with your traffic count. I don't believe that, I don't believe that you can uh make Charlton Street access to um S- South Avenue safe when it's not safe at this point, current time, when people are coming for bunnies. I'm going to a question, I'm getting to a question. How how do you how do you see the traffic flow out of your property at when it's peak traffic?
Uh sorry, um the question was that, how's the?
Where do you see your traffic flowing to out of McDonald's?
Yeah, so.
Peak ti- at peak times when it's when users are busy and the traffic banks up past Charlton Avenue at them lights. How do you see your traffic getting out of there?
Well, so there's um access, oh well, access or egress off Snape Street as well. So that's a left out only. So that's been um assessed by Transport for New South Wales and council who have confirmed that's an appropriate um exit point for the site and would be able to utilise that. So there's two exit points at the site.
So so long as someone lets them out. Yeah, right. Okay.
Uh councillor um Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh I'd just like to say, uh on behalf of the residents who have been back in touch with me, uh I thank you very much for handling them very well and they spoke very highly of you. Thank you.
I'll take that as a comment, not a question. Um councillor Sander, the question?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Um I have some concerns certainly with um the traffic congestion on that corner. Um. How would McDonald's deal with the um parking or go into the drive-through? Um is there any capacity to go into the car park and instead of it spilling out onto Charlton and Snape Street? I have great difficulty in that um congestion that's gonna mount up there, especially in peak times.
Yeah, so definitely. So if um, you know, there's two offerings. So there is the drive-through, but there's also the dining option as well. So if the drive-through is at capacity, they do have the option for going, you know, parking up in the car, utilising the car park and going inside and ordering in store.
Councillor Burke.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you for uh joining us tonight. Uh while it's not in this agenda, uh in the previous uh report we had to counsel, it showed a decent uh layout and a diagram of the traffic uh through the drive-through. What would McDonald's do to alleviate any pressure where if the drive-through is um full, that means Charlton Street entry exit is blocked off? That Charlton Street is a no-through road? So what measures um is McDonald's willing to do to make sure that our local roads aren't impacted by the overflow of your car park?
Um look, uh thank you for the question. Look, Mc- McDonald's, like I said, we've gone through the assessment process and gone through the criteria as well, which were exceeding in all counts. Um in relation to drive-through uh queuing onto the street, that is not what McDonald's would like to see because at the end of the day, McDonald's wants an efficient store. Nobody is gonna be really wanting or enjoying queuing if it's out in the street and waiting a long time. Uh so in terms of, like we say, we s- see uh driver behaviour, tends itself, so if there's an extended queue, it would be going into the car park or going, you know, elsewhere, which could be this the other McDonald's store.
Uh and just a a question from me, um in regards to at the last meeting, we we did ask um McDonald's to go away and reconsider the plans for onsite traffic management um and considered the layouts that um uh that K F C in in Cessnock use for for their onsite traffic management, similar to the D A we've just uh uh approved for a Hungry Jack site where the onsite traffic um bank up from uh the from drive-through is is managed on site. Um why didn't McDonald's consider making any of those changes suggested?
Oh, look, the the they were definitely considered and they've been considered over the past two years of this um process. Um like I said, it is not just the the drive-through layout which dictates this the site. There's se- several other factors as well, which includes acoustics, includes visual, includes flooding. As we know, there's, you know, the the area is flooding as well. So it's really locating that building foot footprint, which is not just best for one thing, but the overall building and development as a whole.
Uh and you're comfortable in the traffic management plan that traffic on site is not going to gridlock and spill out onto Charlton and Snape Streets and blocking the major intersection of of one of our traffic routes?
Um yes, I I, you know, I believe in uh expert um traffic consultants' work and also the work of Transport for New South Wales and the the council's traffic team as well.
And so if there were conditions to put on that to say that um there can be no spilling out on those things, McDonald's would be comfortable in accepting that because there's no, they they're comfortable in the onsite traffic management plan and therefore um if they're in breach of those conditions would be willing to um have council take action against them for breaching development consent conditions.
Um like I said, McDonald's uh wants an efficient store and efficient layout. So at the end of the day, um uh McDonald's wants it to be run as efficiently possible, so we don't wanna be seeing any queuing on the street.
Okay, I have no further questions. There are no further questions for anyone else. Um thank, please thank uh We'll now move to uh deal with report P E sixty one twenty twenty two. Uh councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. I would like to move the recommendation with uh a small amendment as written on screen. Uh the amendment includes two additional uh conditions under point I there in the in the recommendation that the plan of management shall be amended to include the training of staff to appropriately manage the drive-through lanes in order to ensure that traffic does not queue onto surrounding streets and or impede the local surrounding road network, including Charlton Street and Snape Street. And the second dot point, that no queuing of traffic is permitted to occur in the surrounding local road network as a result of the operation of the site, including but not limited to the operation of the drive-through facility. In addition, queuing traffic must not impede and or impact the internal parking spaces and traffic circulation areas within the subject site.
Is the motion seconded? Councillor Dunn, uh speaking, councillor Hill?
Thank you, Mayor Savell. I I do also share similar concerns as to those that have been uh raised by councillor Olson and councillor Sander in that although the the planning and traffic studies state that they don't believe that the increase in traffic will affect the surrounding roads, I think that it would only take a short amount of time of the operation of this site to see that occur. And whilst the development meets all the requirements to be approved, uh and we would of course possibly see it come through the Land of Environment Court um being approved as well if we were to reject it here tonight. I think that the inclusion of these two conditions to um actively work to try to restrict that um queuing of traffic on the surrounding streets is council's best method in addressing the the problem that is inevitably, we believe, going to occur.
Okay, councillor Judd.
Thank you, Mayor. I find this so frustrating that this has come back to council and the D A holder hasn't listened to our concerns. To bring a second McDonald's to Cessnock in this location, I wasn't for it at all, as I would prefer it out of the C B D, maybe out near Bullbird or maybe up on the Mag Mile, if we had to have a second one. I know a few residents who were completely no, not at all, as they can see what I can see about the road and traffic issues on this corner. A few were yes for the McDonald's to bring life into Vincent Street. I would have supported this if you had listened to our concerns. We live here and we drive these roads every day. Yet here we are, the report is the same as two months ago and not a single traffic concern addressed. So I can't support it. Thank you.
Councillor Burke.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Um first up, I must say that I certainly support development in our local area that creates jobs and um I think it's something that we could probably be um hopeful for, that if a multi-billion dollar company sees growth in Cessnock, um then we are certainly heading in the right direction. And I certainly appreciate um that there's been thought given um by the applicant on the frontage of Vincent Street. Um I like that there's a bit of a park area and there's also um a foot path, um and that certainly fits in with our plans for that intersection as the gateway uh to our great city. Uh the saying is build it and they will come and how true that is. And once McDonald's does build it, it is going to bring a lot more traffic uh to that intersection. Uh the intersection is already busy. Uh traffic on Snape Street heading towards Aberdeare does already back up uh in in peaks uh periods. Uh this does bring concerns um for me to the development uh with an already busy intersection. I think having McDonald's there, it'll certainly intensify. In addition to this, I do have um concerns and that's why I asked the question uh to the speaker tonight is that the Charlton and um entry and exit will be blocked off. Um you've only got to look at places like our our current Cessnock McDonald's, um that it does spill out onto Ferguson Street. Um and if you look at something like K F C uh in um in town, that was uh before the new one was built uh on how much uh the traffic did spill out onto Wall and By Road. And when um the owners of K F C rebuilt, um yes, admittedly, they were putting another uh fast food outlet on site as well. I think that they took on board some feedback around making sure that their day-to-day operations don't impact uh our roads. And you can see by the improvement of that area, I know that K F C still does get busy and you see that in peak times, but we certainly do not have the issues uh that we had before. We have concerts, we have sporting events, we have events at the pack. And those people are mo- quite possibly going to use uh this Macca's across the road. And I still have concerns around people going into Charlton Street. And if there is uh two lanes heading into the drive-through and it's backed up, I have concerns that people won't know what to do. We're not just going for locals, this is for visitors as well. And if you go into Charlton Street, then can't get into the facility, you're then forced down a road that is a no-through road or it's meant to be a no-through road. Uh I think that there could have been some more um giving back by the applicant uh in that. Um I'm disappointed that there are have been concerns raised uh with the applicant uh and uh that hasn't certainly uh come back uh to this meeting. I do also, on the flip side, exactly what I said about uh the previous D A that we've just approved, is this is, as as councillor Hill has said, i- I feel that we're in a rock and a hard place uh based on the traffic because if I was to uh go against this tonight or council was to go against this tonight, I guarantee you we would be wasting money because the Land and Environment Court will approve it because it's up for approval and it's up and it's been given the green light by the the state government. They're not going to go back on just from our conversation at this meeting. And I certainly find that it is um a crazy position to be in. Do you appro- approve the development that's going to have traffic issues for the years to come? Um or do you possibly uh waste fifty, sixty thousand dollars um going to the Land Environment Court? It's a difficult call. I can appreciate it's difficult for everybody. Um but I certainly support development. Um but certainly it's hard to support a development at the cost of our local road network.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, just a question first. Them two points we've just put in there, the plan of management shall be amended to include the training of staff to appropriately manage the drive-through lanes in order to ensure that traffic does not queue onto surrounding streets. And the next one, of no queuing of traffic is permitted to occur in the surrounding local road network as a result of the operation, and goes on and on. How how do we enforce them?
Director.
I'm through you, Mister Mayor. Um generally, the way we normally enforce these things is we would rely on complaints from members of the public. If we um got a, you know, a a lot of these complaints, we would probably proactively enforce it with our enforcement officers. Um and if it got to the point where it was creating um real traffic safety issues, we would then be having a discussion with the applicant about how they were gonna address those matters. Ultimately, um if that wasn't successful, we'd probably end up in a prosecution situation.
So that's a couple of years of uh chasing up, because I've seen what we do, uh council does, when we have to prosecute someone. It takes years and years and years. The the thing I'm 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 asking there, are you expecting on this condition here that sixteen-year-old kids that are serving on the counter on the drive-through have got to go out and tell cars to move?
Um Mister Mayor, my expectation is that the applicant would do whatever's necessary to comply with the conditions of consent.
Right. So, okay, and, yeah. So to- today it's, there's a problem, tomorrow they're not when the Rangers are there. Um what, nothing's gonna change, it's going to still be an issue. I can't see how a plan of management to train sixteen-year-old kids can stop a queue of of cars that are trying to get food. They're going to still line up. Same as, how do we stop them from lining up out into Charlton Street? I I can't see how we can. I I I can't believe we're even considering this as being for approval when I I I know the Charlton Street entrance, like you come out of Bunnings and no one ever turns right because you can't get out. You have to turn left. And to say that Charlton Street's uh a dead-end street is ludicrous. There's a car park there that everybody drives through now. So uh that that what we'll find is we'll be forcing cars to run through that car park like a rat race and we have pedestrians coming in and out of the club. And who knows what will happen then? And they'll be coming up back up onto the Vincent Street. And they'll be coming back up onto the Vincent Street exit, or they'll come down into into Hall Street exit. It it's just ludicrous to think that we're going to put this. Development on a corner that's congested now. And to think that we're only ever going to have six cars lined up. They're going to drive away or be told by a sixteen year old to drive away because we can't have any more cars in the lineup. And I'm I'm sure someone that's lined up out into the street is going to tell them the what they think of them, and well, they won't come back. Yeah, I think just think it's a poor design. We, I've heard people just talking about K F C. Saying how they've managed theirs and put the long queue in so it gets off the road because it was a massive problem on Wallenby Road. Now, we're going to create another problem. We're going to have a problem when they do deliveries. One of the one of the queue lines is going to be closed off so they can do their deliveries. And there's no guarantee what time a truck's going to turn up. You can tell, you can say, I want them between midnight and two, and they'll turn up whenever they get there. Because that's all they can do. They have other McDonald's to deliver as well. I just think this is in a, it it the whole design. We've just wasted two months on this, waiting for it to come back with better better plans. And now we're scared that if we say no, we might end up in the Land Environment Court. Does that mean we're going to lose because we send it, we we say no to it? Does that mean we get in the Land Environment Court, we say no? We might as well just walk, pack up here and go home now if that's the case, and just say, do what you want. Why have we got a council? We are here for the people, we're here to represent the people, and I won't be supporting this because clearly it's not been enough thought put into. The location of the ac- actual drive through.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Firstly, I'd like to um a- agree with councillor Burke in his concerns around. The traffic flows on that area. Um, but in saying that, I I find it difficult to draw the line between. Um, the the issues associated with the traffic that is going to be generated by this particular development. That they are allowed to do and council um has given the recommendation for approval. And what um council's obligations are within the traffic network of the entire C B D. Now, over the last few months, we've been having conversations around a transport strategy and and what's been lacking over the last few years. And and we know there are things in the backlog of infrastructure that needed to be done that hasn't been done. So, in in the back of, in back of my head, a- a- as much as I hate to use the words restraint of trade. That that sort of pops up to me in that, um, how could I consciously um deny um the proponent of this D A. The ability to trade when possibly there are a lot of things that are associated with the traffic around this problem that. Are related to the backlog of infrastructure that our council hasn't done. So, given that, um. Flooding, um the proponent is aware where um the building is and the history of that corner, so they are aware um. That 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 corner does flood and they've been given the approval in respect to that. Um, as far as employment goes, um it's increased entry level and youth employment, and they have a well regarded training program, so. Um, entry level employment in Cessnock is something that's that's needed, um and we need more of it everywhere. Um, amenity, um the treatment of Vince, the Vincent Street side uh matches council's vision of the revitalized uh gateway precinct. And um in conjunction with the civic park and the C P A C redevelopment, I I think they have gone a long way to make sure it fits in with the amenity of the C B D. Uh, with respect to attenuation, I think um the proponent has been proactive in working with the local residents to mitigate issues around noise. And they do need to be congratulated on that. Um, the twenty four hour trial period. I think is appropriate with regard to crime and civil obedience and and traffic and the residential impact. But um I am comfortable with the the two dot points that we've added with regard to traffic management within the. The um car park of the area. And if if they are um managed the way council should work and manage those, I think. Um, that there shouldn't necessarily be a problem. And I I would personally believe that. If I was someone that was going to that particular McDonald's and there was a lineup in that drive through. I would probably go the extra, you know, a few hundred metres down the main street to the other Macca's and go in that drive through. So, yeah, I don't have a problem with supporting this there.
Thank you. Um, before we we wrap up debate, um given the the controversial nature of this um item. I feel I need to make a statement of the direction I'll be voting tonight. Um, I want to start by pleading with McDonald's, um and their. I'm making a statement on on the item. Yes. Councillor, councillor Olson. Councillor Olson, you've moved to a point of order, um and I will address the counterpoint of order in, we have had this addressed. To to you and through memos uh earlier this council term, that there is nothing in the code of meeting practice. That prevents the mayor from making a statement during debate. Um. Councillor Olson. Councillor Olson, I have made my ruling on it and it has been advised to you previously in council memos. It was advised to you by the acting general manager at the time, based on the code of meeting practice. Director.
Um, thank you, Mayor Savell. Uh, councillor Olson, there was an email that went out, I can't remember the date. Um, it was certainly after a previous meeting where you had raised questions as to whether or not the mayor could enter debate. Um, we reviewed the code of meeting practice, um got some ad- um advice from our governance team. And um a few neighbouring councils as well. And the advice went out, which basically. Um paraphrase what the mayor just said, there is nothing that prevents the mayor from participating or um. Making a statement during the course of a council meeting, um and that's what the memo um referred to.
Okay, now moving, so moving dissent in in the ruling. Sorry.
If you, if you were, if you were to go to federal government, if you were to go to state government. And seeing the people that cheer those the meetings there, they are not allowed to speak. So why is the mayor allowed to debate on an issue here tonight that is, sits there, listens to everyone speak. And makes rules things in in order or out of order, and then wants to turn around and make his comments at the end of debate? That is influencing how we vote and it's not allowed. From the people I have spoken to, and I have got an email at home, like. Didn't bring it with me tonight, I forgot to bring it, that says the mayor is not allowed, the chairman is not allowed to debate. Or make statements on any issue. If he wants to make a statement, he has to move, remove himself from the chair. And if you don't want to follow the protocol, fine, you do it your way. But your way is wrong. And it's not re- representing this community the way you should be representing this community and being fair. And chair the meeting as a chairman, not as a person that's coming to come out here and debate us, as councillors after we've had our say. And it's totally wrong. And it's totally wrong that these people sitting out here tonight, and it's totally wrong to the developer, that you make statements to influence the debate. To influence the debate. We are here tonight to represent the people. And we are supposed to be fair in our governing of this of this this council. And this is totally unfair. To all the councillors sitting here tonight that's already spoken and can't have any right of reply to what you're going to say now. No one can speak because you're the last speaker and you're not allowed to, you're not allowed to do it, you're not allowed to do it any other level of government. And I have got an email from from the Department of Local Government saying the chairman is not allowed to speak. Either in committee meetings or as in a council meeting. I will find it, I will forward it on to you and I'll be putting a complaint in.
In reply to your uh motion of dissent councillor um Olson, I will be sticking with my ruling. That the mayor is allowed to uh to speak uh and make a statement during the proceedings. Uh, that was advised to all councillors uh after a view of the code of meeting practice. And through a discussion uh with other neighbouring councils. Uh, your statement that it prevents other councillors from speaking, uh it does not. We have not closed debate, there has not been a right of reply, uh had. And other councillors are more than welcome to make contribution uh on this matter. Uh, your. Your view uh in in sort of doing this prevents me uh from participating and telling uh the community. Uh, I think the community would like to know where I stand on controversial items. I don't enter into debate on every um item. I don't do that, but on a matter, uh I'm I'm not intending to 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 discuss. Uh, what everyone else is doing or debate whether you are right or wrong. I'm speaking on why I am making my decision tonight. Uh, and I will uh be putting that. So, uh on that procedural motion, um uh moving. So councillor Olson has moved uh dissent in the ruling. Uh, so for those supporting um councillor Olson's uh dissent, uh please raise your hand. Uh, there's councillor Painter, Olson and Judd, those are gates. Uh, councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Savell. Uh, I've declared the motion of dissent lost. Um, so as I was saying, I'm pleading with McDonald's tonight. Uh, and through their their speaker that is here to take consideration of what. The community and what the councillors have raised in their concerns about the traffic management plan. Uh, just because uh a D A uh is approved, if it gets approved tonight or if it gets rejected. Uh, that still does not prevent McDonald's from from changing their minds and putting forward a different traffic management option. Which will not uh uh influen- not impact the local traffic network. Um, I um will be supporting the the resolution as it's gone forward. Uh, for the reasons that I I think the um it is the best way to get some actions put in. Uh, which are uh listed in the two additional points uh mentioned. And if we don't uh, like if uh if my view is if this wasn't uh put in there tonight. That I would be very concerned about um the approval happening through the Land and Environment Court. Uh, without those additional um conditions. So, I um I will be supporting it tonight. Uh, councillor Painter.
Yes, through you, Mister Mayor. Um, my question is to the director of works in infrastructure. With the um no three road, I believe on Charlton Street heading towards Hall Street. And to, because this is controversial and to alleviate the concerns of um traffic backing back up to Snape Street. Could that be upgraded to alleviate people to turn right and head out that way rather than turning left back into Snape's Snape Street?
Director.
Through you, Mister Mayor. So, um council would need a good justification in order to add a condition to upgrade the road. Um, and the traffic impact assessment, um at my understanding has dealt with all of that. Um, you could put it in as a condition, but um it would be open to a challenge.
Just since that could be a possible solution, it's very controversial. I know it's money that we don't have, um but um it's just an op- option.
Is there no further debates? Uh, so we'll put the resolution, those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, uh Grine, Sander, Hill. Hawkins, Painter and Savell, those are gates. Councillors Burke, uh Olson and Judd. I'll declare the motion carried. Uh, yes, sorry, the recommendations. Um, now, moving on to. Um, consideration and adoption of all reports by englobo, uh call councillor Dunn.
Uh, that having read and considered the reports and the agenda related to items G M U twenty six. Um, Hunter Valley Destination Management Plan twenty twenty two to twenty thirty. G M U twenty seven, the visitor economy grants and sponsorship programme, twenty twenty two round one applications. P E sixty four, community participation plan review. C C eighty minutes of the Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander Advisory Committee. Uh, C C eighty two, rate subsidy policy review. C C eighty three, annual unreasonable customer conduct report. C C eighty four, investment report September twenty twenty two. C C eighty five, resolutions tracking report. W I sixty six, pedestrian access to Elizabeth Street, Abermain. Um, W I sixty eight, minutes of the local traffic committee meeting held on the nineteenth of September twenty two. And W I sixty nine, minutes of the road review committee held on the fourteenth of September twenty twenty two. Uh, that council adopted the recommendations as printed for those items.
Uh, they seconded councillor Burke. Um, no debate, uh put the resolutions, all those in favour for the recommendations, uh. On the englobo? Yeah, sorry, unanimous. Um, now moving on to. Uh, report N I sixteen twenty twenty two, notice of intention to deal with matters in confidential session. Uh, we have someone moving, that way is councillor Hill, seconded councillor Dunn. Uh, speaking on that councillor Olson.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Uh, again, we've got um two censure motions here tonight. Code of Conduct complaints. And again, we want to hide them in uh confidential session. The.
Councillor Olson, I'll just stop you there. Um, there's there's no hiding, this is a requirement of the Office of Local Government. That code of conduct matters are held within confidential session. So, I'll ask you to.
Yeah, I'll 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 read from the Local Government Act nine hundred ninety three, it says which parts of the meeting can be closed to the public. A council or committee meeting of the council of which all the members and councillors may close to the public. Doesn't say it must, doesn't say must in there. Where does it say must? We're spending a lot of money on these investigations, Mayor. We we were told there not long ago that up to twenty five thousand dollars, maybe thirty thousand dollars. For an investigation. And this will be for this year. So, we're spending taxpayers' money on uh. On investigations into councillors that um because they might say something or offend somebody. But then we're going to spend that money without letting the public know what that councillor done so bad. That he's uh he he's going to be censured twice tonight. Um, wh- why is it got to be hidden away? Why can't we have put it out in the open? Everything that happened in these two charges happened in the open. Nothing was hidden. Nothing was done behind closed doors. None of it's lies, it's all fact. It it, why is it, why is it that we can't tell these people that's sitting here or the people at home watching on T V? What 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 a coun- council's done so bad that our council can spend a hundred thousand, up to a hundred thousand dollars to censure them? Why can't we tell them? It's these, it's these people's money that we use, you spend to investigate people. If you want to defend yourself, you've got to put your hand in your own pocket. But if you want to use the council to attack someone. You can use council's money to attack the person. If the coun- if the councillor that wants to attack me. Had to pay for it themselves, I can guarantee you, these four wouldn't be here now. It's all about just trying to shut someone up that's out there telling the truth. And all I want is the truth to be told. Anyone, anyone sitting in here that thinks that I have put in lies on my Facebook page or I told lies in this council chamber. That wants to laugh at that, prove it. Prove it. Bring it forward. Because I have not told a lie anywhere, I've never been caught for lying. That doesn't say lying, it doesn't say lying in there. It does not say lying, you know that. So don't hide behind closed meetings, it's an open.
Councillor Olson, I will remind you that the code of conduct. Uh, matters are confidential and who they relate to are confidential, uh and it should remain so at that point. Well. Councillor Olson. Councillor Olson, I I have the the resolution, uh the the ruling here in in front of me under the code of conduct. Uh, procedures uh adopted by council, uh uh item number seven point four seven. Which are based off the model code uh from the Office of Local Government, which states. The council is to close its. the council is to close its meeting to the public and consider the final investigation report in cases where it is permitted to do so under section ten A of the Local Government Act. We're going to, uh I.
You sound talking the truth. When, when did I lie?
So.
Tell me now, when did I lie?
Councillor Olson.
If you're gonna sit there and laugh at me and say I.
Councillor Olson, come to order, councillor Olson. That is inappropriate behaviour and not within the code of meeting practice. Is there no more debate on this item? I think we'll put the item. Uh all those in favour. Councillors Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, uh and Saval, those against. Councillors Painter, Olson and Jurd, I declare it uh carried. Uh we'll now move to uh report G M U twenty five twenty twenty two. Uh councillor Sander.
Oh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um.
Apologies, yeah. Now we'll go back. Councillor Sander, so um there are no merril minutes. Uh motion of urgency. Councillor Olson.
Yeah, Mayor, uh Saval, I got this uh mo- motion of urgency. It's about the merril car. Uh my motion is that when the mayor is per- per- performing his duties in another role other than the mayor of Cessnock, the merril car is passed on to the deputy mayor to fulfil the roles required as acting mayor. I have that notice ma- that motion.
So first.
You, you, you need to know why I'm putting it up.
So can I ask you why councillor Olson, this is urgent and is not something that could not go through the normal meeting practice and has to be dealt with as an urgent matter?
I'm just about to explain that. I'm just about to explain. The may- the merril car is provided for the duties of the mayor of Cessnock. And as our mayor has employment, you have employment elsewhere where you spend days in Canberra and travelling around to fill that role, others are stepping up to cover for you. The car is going with you and not staying in Cessnock. If the car is so important to do your role as the mayor, then it's common sense that it's left to the de- for the deputy mayor, who is filling in many times for you while you're, while you're away in Canberra or wherever you work. So I believe it's a merril car that should be used for the Cessnock mayor or the acting mayor. And that needs to be sorted out A S A P because our deputy mayor is currently running all over the valley in his own car. While you got the car in Canberra.
No. Um my um uh ruling on, on this is this does not meet the criteria of an urgent motion that could not be dealt with through the normal uh practices.
So you want me to put it into the notice motion for next meeting?
I would suggest you follow the code of meeting practice on, on those matters and, and submit it through the normal channels. Okay, um. Now, we'll now move to uh report uh G M U twenty five twenty twenty two and I'll again call councillor Sander.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Um I have an amendment to the um original recommendation. Um the council adopts the uh Apex Park Master Plan as detailed with the amendments outlined in this sub- report, subject to the following conditions. That construction will not proceed if flood modelling of the detailed construction designs show impacts on surrounding areas. And that a fence be added to the design preventing pedestrians from crossing Allendale Road except via the traffic lights. And that the general manager contacts Hunter Water Corporation requesting the technical, financial and project management support to complete the drainage channel ri- uh naturalisation portion of the Apex Park Master Plan.
As the motion seconded, councillor Hill. Any debate? Uh speaking councillor Sander.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Mayor. Um this is a good project and it's a um basically a, a, a grant. Grant dependent um project, but Hunter Water need to look at their modelling, certainly um first and foremost. Because we know how much water goes through that concrete drain. Um in the last couple of flood events, it has been really nearly to top of the, the drain. And I don't wanna put ourselves or um other residents in uh danger if the thing's going to flood. So we need a, a perfect modelling scenario. Um and also the fence we've been banging on in the council chambers for years and years about the, the danger for pedestrians and children crossing from Apex Park to um the pool. It has been on the books for years. Um whether we go to uh transport for New South Wales, need to talk to them. But certainly this plan needs to have a fence so that we can channel the people up to the traffic lights. So the danger is basically negated from crossing a road from um Apex Park um to the pool. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. Firstly, I just wanna say that I didn't mind the design of this. And um I like the fact that, and you've got the fence up there. But after asking a few questions, I'm a bit concerned. This is a lot of money. It's either ten percent or twenty five percent of what I can see is nearly a thirteen million dollar project. That a lot of it will be grant funded if we can get the funding either from Hunter Water or the local government. I asked would this park take away money from other projects or money off roads? Because we keep saying we haven't got enough money for roads. And a lot of people in this town, which is all know, want our roads fixed. Now, roads are not usually funded by this grant, but any co-contribution provided by council can be used to fund roads. So if we have to do twenty five percent, that's a lot of money going from our roads budget. The other issue I had was the E V stations and how much they cost. Now, there was never in this, it says E V charging points are a way to encourage people to shop, which I understand that. But there's unsure of the costs involved. There's also, we're gonna put a kitchen in there that's only for pop- a pop-up shop. Um I couldn't find out how much that was. So there's a few things in here that are a lot of money. The issue I have is I keep saying you don't go buy a brand new car when your toilet is broken. Simple. It, it makes no sense to go spend this much money on a beautiful park. It would be amazing. But can we just concentrate on getting our roads safer, safer for the people? That's just where I'd rather spend our money. I would rather not take money from our roads and s- to, to put in another park. Thank you.
Councillor Painter.
Yeah, I was similar concerned. My, my concern is like, we get grant funding um admittedly and it's gonna be a nice park and I commend um Anne on her amendment to the fences. But post-construction, this park would need to be maintained. And I'm concerned that we are building ourselves infrastructure which don't produce um an income and we have no income to support them post-construction. And um so, well, Bridges Hill Park, my theme exists, it's fantastic. But all, within the short time of it being constructed, it's already in um maintenance decline and parts um blocked off. And I just don't wanna see us handing on a legacy to future councils and, and putting that financial burden on uh, on the rate payer and future councils on, on infrastructure we can't maintain. So that's much my concern. Do we have um a maintenance budget? Do we understand what our infrastructure, what, whatever park it is, whatever road it is, whatever facility we, we run? Do we understand as a council how much our maintenance um commitment is? And I don't think we do.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, I'll look. The old saying, if you can't maintain the assets you got, you don't get more assets. And this is, uh this is a problem we've got here is we're, we're trying, look, we're trying to beautify the town with a park that we've got no money for that we're going to try and get grants for. And then if it becomes a, a fifty fifty and we get the grant, well then we're gonna get told we're gonna find the other fifty percent. Then we were looking at Civic Park down the other end of the town. We, we'll wanna do that as well. But the infrastructure we've got around us is falling down. The roads are, oh, they are atrocious, atrocious. And like, you, you, go and have a look at Mount View Road, which was patched only six to eight weeks ago. And that patch has been patched. It's just costing us so much money. And if we don't get into fixing our roads, we might as well go back to horse and car. So that'll so, so save the environment. And, and then we won't, cause we won't have any roads to drive on. It's getting that bad. Um I, I don't, I don't think I can pick a road that is in the back streets of Cessnock L G A that hasn't got potholes in it or is about to fall apart. It, in the last ten years, our roads have got so bad. And we can talk about the rain we're having now, but if the roads were in better condition, they wouldn't be falling apart now. The, the road between Abermain and Neath, I'll keep saying it, it was built fifteen years ago and not a pothole in it. It was built to standards that were better than we mu- we obviously don't use. And that's what we need to change. We need to be doing things better. But we ca- and it, it's great to have these parks. And it's like councillor Painter said, once we build them, we then have to maintain them. That puts cost onto the council. Again. We can't keep doing this and looking at things like more parks and more parks if we can't afford to fund it. And we should be pulling up and saying, let's prioritise what the community wants. And I don't know what other councillors listen to, but um maybe they don't get enough followings like I do on their Facebook page, but I listen to my people. And they say to me every day, it's roads, it's roads, it's roads.
Can, can just, can I just pause you there, councillor Olson? Can I, I remind the people in the gallery that uh this is not a theatre. Um we are here to undertake the business of council. Uh and the, the people in here, in the gallery are to remain uh quiet while debate is being undertaken.
Yeah, as soon as we get, um we've got master plans for parks everywhere. The thing that worries me, like Western Soccer Ground has got a master plan that's gonna cost nine million dollars. And it's getting pushed down the list. That they're, they're the top team in, they're playing the best competition in Northern New South Wales. And we're not supporting them if we keep looking at parks like this and other parks and other parks and other parks. We need, we've got a good ground for our, it's Cessnock Rugby League. We've gotta have a good ground for our west, western soccer club. We've gotta make sure we have, have good facilities so that they can stay in the top level. But putting in more parks in front of pu- doing our roads, I can't support it. I just, I'm just over all these master plans coming through this council and plans that will never get off the ground unless someone gives us a bucket full of money. And where is our priority? Is it Apex Park? Is it Weston? Is it somewhere in Currie? Is it Currie Football Ground? What's our priorities? And we haven't got them. We haven't got them. We don't know. We just do things out of hock here and, and it's just getting worse.
Councillor, councillor Moores.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing uh I have to say about this uh Apex Park, I'm uh for it. It is the exit of the vineyards. Uh it's gonna be quite good when it's done. But the most concerning part of I've got is that I was there the other day and there is, I wanna take, the councillors take into consideration that there is big semi trailers that fly out of the back of the pub there with cars on. There's dropping new cars off, a Toyota. And they're using that car park that goes up the side of the pub which is smack on Apex Park Corner. So there is transport coming through there and there's big semis with cars on and weighing a lot heavier than what that road can take. So then I made it my, my privilege to go and walk right through to the other side of where they're coming in. And if you go and have a look at it um there that you'll find out you'll be looking at the Rio where they've smashed the hell out of the uh curb and guttering. So I think that should be taken into consideration the traffic that's gonna be still coming through there with children playing in that park. Thank you.
Councillor Burke. Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Just a question um to the director of corporate or whoever would like to take the question. Um if, if I'm voting on this tonight, am I voting to take mu- take money away from our roads?
Director.
Um thank you. You're um voting tonight on a um master plan. Um it does have some indicative costs, but you're not actually committing to um do any of those costs tonight. So you're not allocating any dollars to any of these projects, as did in the plan.
Okay. Thank, thank you for that uh clarification. Um I do want to also um thank the twenty people that uh put in formal public submissions. Um I totally appreciate what's already been said in the gallery tonight in that, you know, roads are our priority. Uh parks are part of our priorities as well. And if you look at the submissions in the agenda, there's actually only one that I can see that actually reflects what's actually been talked about tonight. Um all of the comments by the general public are in favour of what we're adopting tonight. They talk about that um they don't go to Apex Park because it's not appropriate to go to and they would if it was upgraded. Um people are overall supportive of this park. Residents have said that um I think that some, something does need to be done with Apex Park. Um people provide options or suggestions. Um they wanna congratulate council on the initiative. Uh they've studied the concept plans and they cannot wait to see how this space transforms. Uh I think that we also have to be true to every resident. And I don't think there's one resident in our local government area that would disagree that roads are our number one priority. Uh though if you look at the park that we have at Bridges Hill that only come about because we had a plan ready and we were able to access grant funding. And I for one would not vote for this tonight if I thought that money was gonna be ripped out of the director's works budget for our roads. It's not what this is about. This is about upgrading a park that our residents can use. It's not committing us uh financially right now. That obviously that discussion has to happen. But when I look at a report and I can see nineteen others that are in support of us adopting this tonight, I know where my vote lies tonight. Thank you.
Councillor Sander.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um I've got a, a couple of questions.
Uh just before um you go, councillor Sander, cause you moved the motion, you'd closed debate. Councillor Olson, did you have a question? Yeah.
Just some clarification on funding the, um funding that park. That it might not, that might not affect our funding of our roads. The, the email that uh come back from, from the general manager states in here. Now I just want a clarification on this. Applying for funding under the New South Wales Regional Growth Fund, where council must make a twenty five percent cash co- contribution. So there is twenty five percent that we would have to pay if we got funding. Correct? It's in, it's in the, it's in the email.
The general manager.
Through you, Mister Mayor. If you're applied under that particular grant, and if you were successful in that grant, yes, that would be the case. But there's other grants that are a hundred percent funded that may be applicable to be applied for in the future. You're not approving funding, you're approving a master plan that basically allows staff to apply for grants in the future. If something suitable comes up to do that sort of work.
There's also, yeah, is there any way we can gra- get a grant of a hundred percent?
Through you, Mister Mayor. It depends on the grant conditions that are established by the funding body at the time.
Right, cause in, in here, the funding plan would be as follows. Contact Hunter Water, which would result in an estimated ten percent of the total project cost for a council. And if Hunter Water aren't, are not willing to fund the naturalisation work, then we ask Australian and New South Wales Government to co-fund. Uh and this would uh relating.
Question, councillor Olson.
I'm, I'm, I'm clar- I want clarification. We've got a, a councillor saying it's not gonna cost us anything. But here we are, it's either twenty five percent, ten percent or ten percent. That's all the funding options we put in his letter from the general manager.
I, I think.
So it's gonna cost the council. You did say that.
Um and I, I think, can I just go back to, I, I think the um, the general manager's already clarified uh when he stated that if we apply for certain grants, there are, and um. uh when he stated that if we apply for certain grants, there are in, um, we. Okay, so you've you've asked, you you've finished on your question? Yeah, um. No, um, councillor Sander.
Uh, thank you, Mister Mayor. Just a clarification from the um, or director of works or even the G M. Um, the grant funding that we've had sort of over the recent years in regard to Bridges Hill and whatever, we get them from the state or the federal governments. Um, and they are basically for the works at hand. They cannot be spent on anything else except the project at hand. So it's, if it's for a park, it must be spent on the park and it cannot be spent on roads. Is that correct?
Who wants to? The director of works.
In essence, councillor, you are correct. Um, we apply for grants for specific programs under specific uh programs that say they wanna fund these types of works, like Bridges Hill, we went for a recreation park grant. Um, and then that's all you can spend the money on. Um, and some of those bodies, as the general manager did, uh, say, some of them are fully funded. Some of them we have to have a co-contribution of twenty-five percent, sometimes it's fifty. It just depends on the grant program that we are applying for at the time.
Yeah, uh, no further debates. Uh, put the um item, uh, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, uh, Moors, Dunn, Burke, Grine, Sander, Hill, Hawkins, uh, Savell, those against councillor Painter, Alson and Jurd, they'll declare carried. Uh, now moving to report P E sixty-two, twenty twenty-two, uh, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I would like to move a amended recommendation for this item, which includes um a modification there to point two of the recommendation stating that council endorses the planning proposal as an amendment to the Cesnock Local Environmental Plan twenty-ele- eleven, subject to the following amendment. MAP Amendment number forty-four, that the S P two infrastructure zone is to be applied to that part of Aberdare Street Western that bisects the former rail corridor.
Okay, seconded. Councillor Sander. Any debate?
Uh, just. Speak, speaking briefly uh on the item, Mayor Savell, to inform other councillors, this this item forty-four from this planning proposal includes a section of the S P two um zoning, which is the old rail corridor running between uh Curry and Weston. And on the current planning, there is a small section of zoning that um currently bisects that former rail corridor. And I'd just like to make sure that the um, the boundary of that zoning is adjusted, so that if there is any um any purpose to be used inside the S P two infrastructure zone in future, there is not any small uh issues like this that are inhibiting that use.
Okay, no further debate. Put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous, everyone? Yep. Okay, uh, moving on to report uh P E sixty-three, twenty twenty-two. Uh, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. I would also like to move an amended recommendation for this item. Um, in- including an additional dot point that states the future land use uh of the Molly Worthington Netball Courts should be considered at the next con- meeting of the Strategic Property and Community Facilities Committee.
Seconded councillor Grine. Uh, speaking on that, councillor.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, this planning proposal that had been submitted is in regards to the current um site of the Molly Worthington Netball Courts um adjacent to Mitchell Avenue in Curry. Um, we had submitted this planning proposal to consider rezoning the site, um, as we are currently um beginning the detailed design work for our, the new netball courts, hopefully undergoing at Booth Park, Curry. However, the department did not believe that we had um uh without an additional plan for what we would like to do on the site, that they didn't believe our um, our planning proposal is suitable. And uh I'm inclined to agree with them. Uh, I would like that then we follow through with the withdrawing of this planning proposal. Uh, and to help us develop some um plans and some possible options to take to the community for consultation for what could be done with the site um after the new site is constructed. I think that should be de- um discussed at the Strategic Property and Community Facilities Committee.
Yeah, councillor Alson. Uh, yeah, a couple of questions, Mayor Savell. Um, we were, there was, at the federal election, there was a commitment of seven million? Seven point five? When do we expect to see that in the bank account?
So, sorry, that was a.
There's a, there was a commitment of seven and a half million dollars from the federal government. It was a, Labour promised seven and a half million dollars for the two, for this new courts we're gonna build, right? And we're gonna move this from, we're gonna move from here down to a new court. I want, I need to know when are we gonna get the money, so we can have the new courts ready, so we can start looking at what we're going to do with this land. Because we're gonna have to keep using these netball courts until such time as they fix, build the new ones, aren't they?
Yeah, this, this resolution isn't about the new courts or the money or changing anything to do with the use of the current netball court. So thi- this resolution isn't anything to do with Booth Park, any promised money for that or the moving of the netball courts. This resolution is only uh in relation to a planning proposal around that site about whether we wanted to move it from uh, community land to operational land. Um, and any possible land use for that site. Um, and the recommendation is that it be withdrawn and stay as it currently is.
Yeah. Well, we need, we need to do nothing, actually. Oh, that's what, withdraw it. Because if we do anything now, um, we're wasting our time until we get the money off the federal government to do Booth Park up. And then when Booth Park's done up, then we can start processing what we're gonna do with that land there, so. Yeah, right. So we'll do that. That's, that's fair enough, but I'd just like to see that money in the bank there.
Um, and can I just ask um councillor Hill and and Grine that moves a motion if they'd consider amending point two um to rather than the next meeting, because the next meeting is, I believe, next week. Uh, just say a a future meeting of the um, um, of the Strategic Property Committee, yeah. Happy with that as mover and seconder. Um, so next up is councillor Moors.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'd like to see this uh just uh frozen for the time being because we should think of this pretty seriously, because if we, if we're gonna change, change the land, eh, you know, there's more money in commercial if we're thinking of selling the land. Uh, so it's, shall we look at what we're gonna be doing with it first before we start wondering what we're gonna uh change it to, whether it's residential or whether it's commercial? Thank you.
Yeah, councillor Painter.
Yeah, with the um, also I look forward to the grant coming through to um build a new facility for um Curry Community. I'd like to see, see the um old site retained in council um ownership, and whether it's residential or commercial, that um there'd be a view to um what development we put on there to have an income stream back into council. Uh, we need to change um a mentality um that we've had in the past. We don't have, as far as I'm aware, any income-producing assets in this council except for the dump. Um, and that money set aside for rehabilitation of um heritage sites um and future development of that site. So there's no money that comes back in the community, so just have that. I've had several conversations with um my, my colleagues and we are with that view as well.
Okay, no further debate. Uh, put the home, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, moving on to report C C eighty-one, twenty twenty-two, um. Moving that way, councillor Hill, seconded. Councillor Dunn. No debate. Sorry, councillor Jurd.
Thank you, Mayor. I thought someone else might have been saying something. I was a bit slow to the butter button then. I've spoken to a few residents about the Cesnock Performing Arts Centre, as it's been about, hmm, it could be longer than five to seven years since I've actually been there. Most said they felt they didn't want our, now at first I thought it might have been rate money, as I've looked at it now, it is more grant. But they said they didn't wanna spend, at the time, their rate money on it. Um, a few have stated that having the ramp fixed and the lift done would be good. Now, I know this is heavily grant-funded now, but what everyone keeps forgetting, this grant money isn't just government-earned money. A politician doesn't go out to work for a week and gives their wage to council to fix Cesnock Performing Arts Centre. Our tax dollars go to the government, which is then handed out to council to complete projects. So every resident still has a right to say they don't want money wasted in their opinion. So with that, I can't support it just because of the feedback I got. And I'm here to res- to be a spokesperson for the residents that come to me. So, thank you.
Councillor Painter.
Uh, my concerns are um similar to um Apex Park is the ongoing maintenance cost. Uh, even though this is heavily grant-funded, there are approximately seven hundred thousand dollars worth of Cecil council funds to go into this with a twenty fifty thousand dollar con- consent con- contingency, which makes it nine hundred and fifty thousand possible. Yeah, and and um I, to my knowledge, haven't seen a um project come in on budget yet. Um, my, I'd like to add a dot point to have, I'm not against the refurbishment. I'm against um that these assets aren't income-producing um and that they are a cost to council. I'd like to have a review on the business plan to see whether we could um get this running more efficiently and to attract more um venue, um more shows to the, to the site to um attract um an income. So I'd like to add a dot point if I could to have a review of a business plan of a, of CPAC to have it um of, an asset producing, um.
Um, so. Clarification from the, the director on before we.
Um, thank you, Mayor Savell. Councillor Painter, um, that proposal that you're putting forward would more um, more likely come through a notice of motion process.
Yep.
Um, whilst um the, the reasoning behind it is quite sound and is something that can be done. This report is about ordering a tender for works, um, not necessarily reviewing the pluses or minuses or how we're operating the Performing Arts Centre. So I would suggest that if you wish to go down that path, more appropriate way would be to lodge a notice of motion and have council consider that at the next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Alson.
Uh, just a question on the, on page two ninety-six, we have the funding opportunities. We've got remaining repealed contribution plans fund, that's developer contributions, I'm assuming it went from years ago. Um, resources for regions, stronger country communities, creative capital. What's creative capital? Is that another?
Um, thank you. Um, councillor Alson, that's another grant um that was recently announced by I can't remember the minister's name, um, about four months ago, um, councillor Moors was there. Um, Franklin, Minister Franklin, the Minister for Arts, so I mean, it's another funding source from the state government, that's a grant.
Right, so then the, then the last one there is the proceeds, proceeds from the sale of the former art gallery, hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. Unfortunately, that cost us more than a hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. We, we lost probably a million dollars on that. Anyway, that's right, now, now we're done.
Councillor Dunn.
Thank you, Mayor Savell. Um, I agree with councillor Painter in terms of a business plan, but again, um, the, the the business plan itself would be a cost to council and we'd need a funding source for that. Um, I, I do um receive quite a few emails, I don't know if everyone else does, with respect to the fact that we have closed the art gallery and um when are we going to open the new art gallery and what's it going to consist of and what community consultation is it going to be around, um, h- how it's going to work, so. I, I, I personally have had more people ask me about um when it's going to open than have said anything to me around why are we spending money on it. But in saying that, as far as a positive income to council goes, that is why we put these uh line items in the budget as grant-dependent, because we know there are, there are loss to council and we're not prepared to put money that is our own money into that. So therefore, we put them as grant-dependent and usually fully grant-dependent, that we don't have to put money to them, so we can in fact apply for these grants, and when these grants come through, we can then fund those works, and that's what we're seeing here. We've, we've waited, you know, I, I can distinctly remember at the start of two thousand and seventeen, the acting general manager, um, Mister McGinnity. Um, I wrote him an email stating around um what, what if, what I believe our future plans for the art gallery were and um, the CPAC and, and the uh performing arts in the, the entire precinct. And, you know, this is probably one of the last steps in finally realising the, the removal of the o- old art gallery off our assets books and maximizing the opportunities we have in that facility. Opening it up more, allowing more uh diversified opportunities for investment where, you know, at the moment, you've just got the, the Performing Arts Centre that's, that's open very few days of the week, um. We wanna be able to open it, we wanna be able to have, you know, more hours of trade, we wanna have more diversified incomes from that. And this is, this is the way we do it. We apply for grants, we use the grant funding, we get it done. And then, you know, we can attract com- community groups as far as, um, you know, Wollongong Arts community, um, a- as well as many other different aspects. Um, we, we can allow the community to run workshops in there. These are all things that we couldn't do before because of um it being uh uh basically gi- given to a community organisation at, at a very cheap rate. Um, it's, it's one of our best assets we own in the C B D, i- it's if not the best asset we own in the C B D. So we do indeed need to unlock it as best we can and, and get as much benefit from that. And fully grant-funded, um, ways forward like this are, are the only way we can afford to do it. So I'm fully supportive of this. I have been for quite a long time since I've been on council, and I am looking forward to see the result of it once it's finished.
Yeah, councillor Alson, was there a question?
No, I asked, I asked questions earlier, I'm not gonna speak now. Yeah, uh, the uh, this building was, I, I think, it'll be two thousand and ten it was opened, somewhere around that. Back in John Clarence when he was mayor, got it built. The fish opened, but when it was built.
That's not, not a point of water, but.
Yeah, when it, it was started when John Clarence was our mayor. I'm not, I'm not sure of the year it was opened, I can't remember, it was around two thousand and ten. I'm just, I'm just making some comments here about that's been there for twelve years. Now, it cost us uh eight to ten million dollars to build it. Um, here we are eight, ten years later, and we're gonna spend two and a half million on it. Um, and it's not putting any more seats in or making it any better for performances for people to go and watch. It's my, it's putting in some listeners, et cetera, et cetera. But to say this is fully funded is not correct. There's, there's seven hundred thousand dollars that's coming out of council's accounts to make this full, full amount. So next time around, in another five to ten years, when we've got to do more to it, we've gonna have to find more money. So this is what I was talking about earlier. You've got to look after the assets you've got before you put in more assets, because it's gonna cost you more money. And if we don't maintain this at a high level, it's not gonna get the access, the people aren't gonna go there, and it's gonna become a burden on council. Every asset costs you money to maintain. Every extra asset you get is gonna cost you more to maintain. We need to prioritize. We need to get it right. We can't maintain, we can't improve our roads now because we don't have enough money. Yet we still con- continue to think about other assets and saying, we'll get grants, we'll get grants, we'll get grants. But it's costing money to, for council staff time, councils to chase these grants, and we don't always get a hundred percent. And it's like this, we haven't got a hundred percent here, seven hundred thousand out of our pocket, out of the rate payer's money. And that's a lot of money. We need to do it, but it concerns me every time we do this sort of stuff that we're always, always looking at adding to our asset register. And as soon as you add the asset registry, you add up to a maintenance cost. We can't maintain our parks now. If you go around and have a look at them, they're, some of them are disgraceful, absolutely disgraceful. And when they do get mown, they get, they get slashed down, slashed down, and they look terrible. So just be careful when we're thinking about everything we do, what this council does, the legacy you're gonna leave behind. And more infrastructure means more cost, more maintenance, and more, more staff. So we st- we, we need to think further ahead than the ne- next election. You've got to think for the future of this town.
Councillor Moors.
Thank you, man. Councillor Alson, twelve years ago, you were on the council. This was gonna be the jewel of the crown, the Performing Arts Centre. It was gonna be the entrance to the vineyards. I heard all the stories. Here we are now. Here we are now. We now, ten years later, we now own that building. We've just had one point eight million dollars by Ben Franklin has came up and delivered that. And it is gonna be the jewel of the crown. And I think it's something that Cesnok can look at proudly. And it took yous twelve years, but you did the job. And at that time, you were on council and you voted for it. You can't say you didn't vote for it. But what I'm saying is that it is somewhere and when you know what's happening in there. If you go there and find out, like I got the tour guide around there when I was there for the presentation. It's gonna be one hell of a bill then for Sessnock to be proud of. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, uh no further debates. Put the item all those in favour. Uh councillors Jackson, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, uh Grind, Sander, Hill. Hawkins, Painter, Olson, Saval, those against, councillor Jerd, uh to carry. Uh moving on to report number W I sixty five twenty twenty two, moving that way. Councillor Hill, seconded councillor Burke. Any debate? No debates. Let's put the item, all those in favour. Um is councillor Jackson, Moores, Dunn, Burke, Grind, Sander. Hill, Hawkins, Painter, Olson and Saval, those against councillor Jerd, uh to carry. Uh moving on to report W I sixty seven twenty twenty two, moving that way. Councillor Sander, seconded um councillor Grine. No debates, councillor Jerd.
It's more of a question, Mayor, sorry. So looking at this report, it doesn't look like it really changed anything. It just seems like. Just now that the splash pad is open, the gate now can be back open if a lifeguard sees someone. In with a disability, is that right?
Director.
Uh through you, Mister Mayor. So um the report looked at options, but um when we were looking at, but there's limited space. At the site, as you well know, you know, for parking and and for disability access and. And based on the use that we're currently getting, we're not seeing a need for additional improvements. Um and tha- that was really the outcome of the investigation.
Yes, yeah, that's what I thought. I just thought it was like looking at where they can make it better access for anyone that's in a wheelchair or whatnot. And then the uh ramp goes down all the way to the footpath and back in that way if they need to. Is that right? Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further debate. Put the item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh reports uh C O nineteen twenty twenty two. Um and and I will just report to councillors on this item um before. We go in case they wanna change anything on the agenda on it. Uh that the the item actually requested that we undertake meetings. Um and that I um have had a meeting with Maintenance Council and Transport for New South Wales uh about the. Sorry, I've got one sheet out of order. Um so we'll move back to uh report. Uh B N twenty eight uh twenty twenty two. So councillor Olson.
Yes, uh thanks, uh Miss Saval. Uh since um I've put this motion, I've I've been given some new information. That needs to change the motion. Um because we we believe it's a. It's a it's a federal issue that needs to be sorted, not council issue. Um so the motion that I've got. Was sent out by councillor Hill. It would be there somewhere? Yeah, yeah, so that, but I'd also like to make a dot point too. That um if that I I'll supply the name to the. Director of uh finances of the person that made the complaint to me, so he can talk to him and explain the issues. I don't wanna na- I don't wanna name him in here tonight. Is that okay? To put that in?
Um thank you, councillor Olson. Um I believe that this staff had been in contact with a resident recently. Pro- just prior to the councillor memo that went out on this matter towards the end of September. So if that's the same individual, we would already have spoken to that individual. Um if it's not, I'm more than happy for you to send me the name and you don't need to.
Has his issue's been sorted?
The 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 matter was discussed with the individual and it was outlined to that individual what the process was. And my understanding was they um went away, maybe not happy, but certainly understanding what the process was.
Yeah, thanks for that. I'll 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 give him a call tomorrow and just um I I I'll put that motion up as as written there. Um and that will clarify that one for me. Thanks.
So is the the motion seconded councillor Hill? Um speaking on that, councillor Olson or?
No, that's it, thanks.
No, uh we'll put the item all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh report B N twenty nine twenty twenty two.
Yeah, next nation I've got there, I'll just take off. The last from with with the view of adding it to the next budget. The general manager brings a report back to council with costs for a concrete footpath on the north side of Everdare Road. From Mulbring Street to Colery Street, Everdare. And just take that last bit out. So when we get the report back, then council. Councillors and council staff can make a decision on which is our priority of where we.
So we'll just give it a second uh, cancel both.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm I'm happy with that motion as it is there and um. Once we know how much it's gonna cost us, then we can look at what other footpaths we, what other priorities we got. I know that east Cesnock you can get up to east Cesnock, basically you've got concrete, you can get up to west Cesnock, you can't get to Velvet. You can get over to south Cesnock and you can get to north Cesnock, but we can't get the top end of Everdare without a path. And it it's 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 a it's a pretty uneven footpath along there and um I have actually. Walked along there pushing prams and you had to walk on the road. And this, the ladies that contacted me is in a in a wheelchair as well, so. Um yeah, so it'd be good to see how much that's gonna cost and hopefully we can prioritise it later on.
Okay, no further debates. Let's put the item all those in favour. Councillors unanimous.
My my last notice of motion tonight is um B N thirty, um a briefing with the general manager. The the motion reads, the general manager organised a briefing session with councils before Christmas to outline his plans and directions. He has. The Cesnok local governing area, which is to include. How the general manager plans to ensure all budgeted works will be completed annually. What plans the general manager has for the staffing structure of council. Explain any changes to how council will repair and build our roads. For how council can improve our customer services. Five, how the general manager wants councillors to operate in the system, i.e. continue as we do now, or do you have a better op- option? And six, council improvements that can assist applicants with D A's.
Seconded. Councillor Jerd.
I I I, our general manager's been in the seat for nearly two months now and um he's been appointed to to do a role. That uh will um lead us into the next, for the next five years. In the direction of getting better roads, um better infrastructure, better, better, better. Um what I wanna know is how how he plans to improve how we do our roadworks. How we repair our roads, um how the structure of staffing will operate around this. Um improve our customer services is one of the biggest complaints I get off the roads um. People, especially people doing D A's. Uh they say it's very hard to deal with Cesnok council. Um and some of the issues are, like a simple one was. They, a couple told me they had a meeting with a planner. He said it'll be approved by Friday. Tuesday, he moved to a different job. They left these plans sitting there for six weeks before they touched it, give it to someone else to do. And that they they were waiting for approval for six weeks when it should have been done by Friday. So them type of things don't, shouldn't happen. They shouldn't happen. So I. Our 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 general manager, when he spoke to us here um to get the job, he told us how he improved. D A improvements in Newcastle and he told us how he'd done other things. And I'd like to know how he's gonna improve the processes we have in Cesnok council. To make Cesnok council move forward in s- in the next ten years so that we are fixing our roads. We are look, we are spending the money that we allocate every year, cause we haven't done that for I don't know how many years. And catch, let's catch up on some of the 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 works we do, especially how we are going to improve our road repairs. Cause at the moment, they are atrocious. So there's a lot of things there, I wanna know how he's going to do it. And I hope um. I'm hoping that the majority of councillors see that it's it's what we need to know. We might set the um. The 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 uh the guidelines for what we want him to do, but we need to know how he's gonna implement them. So that he is a success with our council into the future and make Cesnok. Ma- make make him be the best general manager Cesnok council's ever had.
Thank you, councillor Hill.
Thank you, Miss Saval. I um I also do share the uh the same the same. Thoughts as as councillor Olson that I would like to to hear about these these concerns and issues um and uh. One example for like uh the the way that we can go about improving how we repair and build our roads has. Has already been a topic of of conversation at the uh Roads Review Committee recently and I would I'd be happy to see that continue further in. Future meetings of that committee as well. The in regards to. The exact uh manner in which the general manager will address these concerns as listed in the motion. I I personally believe that these these uh issues should be addressed through um. Through the specific key performance uh indicators, K P I's that we. Will inevitably set in place through the general managers review committee, uh which councillor Olson is a sitting member of. Um and so I have, I've put up a alternate um motion here if councillor Olson would like to consider it. Um one that one that it notes, um that points regarding that the strategic direction for council. Is set by us councillors through the delivery programme and operational plan, the operational plan being. A document that we are able to um amend and make changes to each each year. And that the organisational structure review and setting of the general manager's key performance indicators. Um that that it be presented to a future meeting of the organisational and general managers performance review committee.
So councillor Olson, are you willing to take on board? No, councillor Hill, are you moving that as an amendment?
I would like to, yes.
So it's moved as an amendment from councillor Hill, seconded by uh councillor Grine. Okay, um you continuing to speak on that amendment or you've already?
Um no, I think I think I I covered that. I would I would ask that in considering. Um in support of my amendment, I would I would ask other councillors to um. To consider that these uh points that are fair points raised by councillor Olson. I believe they should be addressed through the through the proper procedures that we have in place in regards to the the committee and I um. I personally am not a sitting member of that committee, but will will be able to attend that committee and. And have discussions at this point. And then I would um rely on the. The sitting members of that committee, councillor Olson included, um for any any things that's voted on at that committee. But I believe that that procedure should be put in place. Um and my my personal thoughts as well is that if perhaps um. As I have done in the past, if councillors have concerns um and issues they would like discussed. Uh by specific directors or departments of council, that can also always be done. By putting a direct email to uh to the directors and requesting that possibly some of our. Uh spare briefing slots that we have in our briefing schedule can also be used to address these types of uh issues as well. Not everything um has to come through as a norm. Um there's a number of items that I've had addressed from direct emails to directors. And and feel quite confident that that those concerns are often addressed in full in these briefings.
Okay, councillor Moore's.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh councillor Hill, um there's ways of going about it and and performance indicators and all that, I I fully agree. But that's when they've been here for a fair time. And that takes a fair time. So it could be six months or. Or eight months before the next performance review is done on the general manager. So obviously the roads cannot stay like they are for the next eight months. The roads are bad, we just want to know where we're going, which way we're shooting to fix our roads. I have, like most of you, so I'm not just bleeding the heart, we all get ten emails a week. Of abuse on the roads. We know the bad, as I said to a lady this week, I drive the same roads. So you're not telling me anything I don't know. But I think to wait for K P I performances and reviews. We haven't got that time. We wanna know what's gonna happen in the next few months. Thank you.
Councillor Olson.
Yeah, I look, I can't support that amendment. It's um, that's not doing anything like what I wanted. Uh I wanted the general manager to talk to us, tell us what he's going to do. K P I's, we'll set the K P I's for him, but like. In six months' time or twelve months' time, when you you start reviewing them, um. He's not gonna sit there and say, this is what I, this is how I've I've improved this, this is how. I wanna know how he's gonna do it. I wanna ma- I wanna know how he's going to to spend our forty million dollars, like we could talk about every year, we got forty million dollars. But the problem is we're leaving twenty million over from the year before. We don't get it done. I need to I need to know how he's going to do that. He's the man that we we employed to do, to make sure we spent our money, make sure we get the job done properly and we improve this town. That there is only just basically saying, let's keep going, doing what we're doing. That we we, yes, we set the strategic direction, but. The the K P I's and general manager review performance is only for a few councillors allowed to vote on it. And then when it comes in here, you're not allowed to change it. So this briefing that I've asked for is about saying. Come in and tell us face to face, this is what, how I'm going to do it. This is, he he's he's been in the job for two months now. He's been working council for a long time. He should be able to say, this is how I'm going to change your. I'm gonna look at this in the works department, I'm gonna look at this in the planning department, I'm gonna do this, I'm gonna do that. And what what we can, where we need to spend our money. To our rate payer's money, not our money, where we spend the rate payer's money. To in the best areas to make sure we improve this council to move forward. A briefing is the only way to do it, so all councillors can be there and. Uh we need, I I would say at least an hour to discuss this, so we can ask questions as well. I can't support leaving it to uh for K P I's to um. To work out whether if he's doing a good job or not, because K P I's uh could be. That voted one to five and um if you if you like the man, you might vote five, five, five. But he hasn't done a good job, you know what I mean? And then it comes in here and we can't change it. So uh I I I want the briefing. And I I won't be su- supporting the amendment.
Councillor Burke.
Uh thank you, Mister Mayor. When will the uh next um committee meeting be of the organisational general? Managers' performance review?
Uh working, I'm working on scheduling that in the the near future. Um I've reached out to um the general manager and the uh human resources manager. To to work on a plan of when we can fit that in. Um so it would be this year.
Okay, yeah, that's good. Thank you. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Um look, I I um. I appreciate where councillor Hill is coming from with this and I I do actually um support it. Uh I do also support what councillor Olson's trying to achieve here, but I think it's um cart before the horse. I think that we need to um have the organisational uh review committee come together because the general manager. Um needs to know about our um our direction, but also we've got to set K P I's. So how does the um general manager address what councillor Olson Olson is asking for? If we haven't had the first um organisational uh review committee come together. So. Um I'm not saying that councillor Olson's um things are invalid, certainly down the track, but you can't ask for someone. Uh from a H R perspective to report on what's been asked before we've actually gone through the entire process. Of hiring a new G M. Uh we've been through the process before and we go through the same process that was set. Um by this council um before the general manager was rev- um hired, uh which we all. Um agreed on that, uh was reported to a council. So I think that um supporting councillor Hill, let's have the. Uh performance review committee come back together, let's set some K P I's, set the direction. And then have the general manager answer those questions.
Okay, councillor Jerd.
Thank you, Mayor. I would rather it come to a briefing because as we've all discussed, Wednesdays we keep open for council. When we have strategic planning, all these committees, they're not always on a day that I'm not working. So that is why I'd like the briefing. It makes it a bit hard to get to all of them, but also. So that is why I'd like the briefing. It makes it a bit hard to get to all of them, but also que- it, there is a question. When we do these, um, committee meetings, they kinda run like council. You can't always ask, like, fluid questions. They have to run to a structure. Where when we do our briefings, we have more flexibility in asking all sorts of questions. So I don't see a problem with having a briefing and us getting a better working relationship with the general manager. We wanna improve things. It's nothing, it, it's, it's gonna be a better way for us all to know each other so that we can get these things that have been driving the residents nuts sorted out. And I think if we have a good chat, we can get, get sorted. Thank you.
Uh, is this questions councillor Hill? Cause you've already spoken on, uh, your amendment and there is no right of reply. Um, if it's a no, um, it would be a, a foreshadowed. Yeah. Just leave, um, councillor Olson, do you have a question? Yeah.
Just a question, yeah. I'm just wondering, um, how long, uh, do we give our G M who's paid three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year? How long do we give him to start implementing improvements across our council? Well, I'm, I'm, I may go on for councillor Burke over here saying, he's asking, he's saying, we've gotta, we've gotta have K P I's for him and all this sort of stuff. So how long do we give him? How do we, how long do we give our gen- our new general manager? How long do we give him? He's, he's on three hundred and seventy five thousand dollars a year. It's not chicken feed. And he's on a lot of money and I wanna see some action for it.
Councillor, you're not, you've already made your contribution to this. You're, you're not asking a question.
I asked a question.
And
How long do we give him before he starts seeing improvements? That's a question. Councillor Burke's saying we
You're, you're asking it as a rhetoric.
I'll ask you then. Can you answer it? How long do we give him?
Councillor Olson, um, the, the, the resolution, um, we're debating at the moment is the, the amendment that's in front of us. Um, that's suggesting that, um, going through the K P I's, uh, are there. Um, in my view, in answer to your question, um, I believe that's the most appropriate way to go forward because there are things that will come through that process that all councillors can contribute in, not just the, the six dot points that you want to focus on. There are other priorities that are, that other councillors might wanna focus on. And I think that would come out through the G M performance review committee. Um, and that's why I think that is the process. And I've already answered about when that is likely to happen. Um, so
When, when did you say it was gonna happen?
Uh, it will be happening this, this year, um, where we
This year.
We're required to, um, review the organisational structure within twelve months of the election. So that will be coming up, um, shortly.
I'm talking, sorry.
And then I'm, we'll be working and have mentioned to the, um, human resource manager to start discussions with the, uh, consultant, uh, who did the recruitment, who assists us with developing the K P I's. Uh, and it will be reliant on their availability to, to do that. So I haven't got the dates for that, but as soon as I get the dates for that, I will provide them to all councillors and all councillors will be invited, um, and, and you would especially be invited as a member of that committee.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to work out when the general manager review committee will be. The K P I's that we'll set for a general manager, he won't know them until then, until we've got them all done. It could be six months next year before we do that. And then we're gonna wait again.
I would not think it would be that long of a process. Um, so we've, we've spoken, I think councillor Moore's, is that a question? I think you've spoken on the
In the contract, would, wouldn't there have been a task of job and also a scope of work? A task of job and scope of work of job in the G M's contract when he was starting.
There would have been a
Probably not, might be out of order. Okay, no problems. It might be a bit too high for you. Thank you.
Okay, um, we'll now put the amendment, uh, those in favour of the amendment. Uh, councillors Jackson, Dunn, Burke, Grind, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval. Those against councillor Moore's, painter, Olson and Jerd. Um, I'll declare the amendment carried. The amendment now becomes the motion. Uh, we'll now put the, uh, motion, um, I think. No, we've debated this, this motion. So now the, the motion, we'll, we'll put the motion, all those in favour. Uh, councillors Jackson, Dunn, Burke, Grind, Sander, Hill, Hawkins and Saval. Those against councillors Moore's, uh, painter, Olson and Jerd. I'll declare it carried. Um, yeah, um, moving on to correspondence, uh, report C O nineteen, Testers Hollow and Buchanan Road. Uh, just in calling this, I thought I should update councillors um, on the fact that, that it did request meetings take place when we move these original motions as referred to M M twelve. Um, I've had, uh, an initial meeting with Maitland Council, uh, as well as, uh, Transport for New South Wales. Uh, they're continuing discussions on that. Uh, have a follow-up meeting, um, with Maitland Council on Friday, uh, to uh, continue to discuss, uh, flood-free, uh, access routes, uh, for Gilliston Heights and, and the Testers Hollow area. So we'll continue to keep councillors updated. Uh, so I'm moving the councillor Hill, seconded councillor Painter. Uh, any debate? No debate. I'll put the resolution in favour. Uh, you, uh, they're just the correspondence, it's, yeah, unanimous. Um, moving on to, uh, correspondence, uh, C O twenty 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 two, uh, in relation to A R B and Bs. Uh, also I'd like to advise, uh, the councillors that I, I had met with minister Roberts. Uh, as part of that, um, minister Roberts, uh, provided some, some advice to us, uh, and some information around uh, policies they're looking at in regards to agri-tourism, um, that may assist in, in, um, uh, creating more tourism accommodation to take the pressure off, uh, the residential accommodation. Uh, as, as well as suggesting that we reach out to, uh, councils like Byron Bay Council, um, who have been, uh, in my understanding is approved, uh, on a ninety day limit for, um, A R B and Bs, um, for, for their area. However, uh, he didn't believe they had taken up that option as yet and suggested we, um, engage with them further to, to see the reasonings around it and, and what, uh, may work in, in our area. So noting that, um, the correspondence in relation to that is in, in front of us. Uh, someone wanted to move the acceptance, councillor Hill, seconded councillor Painter, um. No other debate. Uh, put that item, all those in favour. It's unanimous. Uh, councillor reports. Uh, if I just make a, a brief report, um, tonight is the, uh, the, the final council meeting that our, uh, director of works and infrastructure, uh, David Maloney will be, uh, attending before he um, moves on to another role. Um, I would like on behalf of council to thank David, um, for his efforts and contribution uh, to council during his time here at Cessnock and wish him all the best, uh, in his future career. Okay, uh, we'll now have a, uh, a resolution from council to move into the closed session of council. Move councillor Burke, seconded councillor Dunn. Uh, all those in favour? Uh, councillors Jackson, uh, Moore's, Dunn, Burke, Grind, Sander, uh, Hill, Hawkins, uh, Painter, Saval, those against, uh, councillors Olson and Jerd. Uh, I will declare it carried. We'll now move into confidential session and ask, uh,